I want to call the meeting to order. It's February 9th. It's a little after 6 o'clock. This is a hybrid meeting, which means that we're in person as well as people being on Zoom. The board is present. Selectman Hall is present.
What do you mean?
Dr. Z is present and Campuchico, the chairman, is present. For those who are watching on cable and they wish to Zoom in, I'll give you the numbers. Do we have it? Yes. The meeting ID number is 872-2749-8058. I'll repeat that. The meeting number is 872-2749-8058. And the password or the passcode is 094941. Again, it's 094941. I'm going to ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Since our last meeting, the following Dyton residents have passed. Joel Anger, age 49, passed away on Sunday, February 6. Joel was our senior clerk for the Dyton Sewer Department. Michael Rulon, age 62, of North Dyton, passed away on February 1st. Michael was a former educator and textbook writer. And Ethan Plant, age 38, of Dyton. Ethan was a member of 245 and an Eagle Scout. Ethan was an athletic trainer and former football standout at Dyton-Hobart Regional High School and Bridgewater State College. Our sincere condolences to their family, and would I ask for a moment of silence in memory of these residents? Thank you.
Thank you. You don't always have nice things to do, but tonight we have a ceremony. I'm going to ask Ms. Souza to come to the podium, please, if you don't mind.
I do mind.
If you don't know Alice, she isn't shy at all. So I'll put my mask back. I hope you can hear. I'm going to take it down if it's okay with you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that people can hear me. So this is a certificate of recognition. Whereas Alice E. Souza has been a lifelong resident of the town of Dyton. And whereas Alice E. Souza married George Souza, and the two raised six children together until George passed away at the young age of 52, leaving Alice to raise their children alone. Whereas Alice E. Souza began her tenure with the town of Dyton in 1969 as a teacher's aide. That was the year I graduated from high school. Working in that position for 10 years, after which she was appointed to the position of Executive Director of the Council on Aging in October of 1979. And whereas Alice E. Souza started the Adult Daycare Program, known as Primetime, in the basement of Town Hall in 1994. And whereas Alice E. Souza, through her hard work and resourcefulness, grew the Primetime Program from just a few clients in the beginning to over 35 clients with a waiting list at its peak. And whereas Primetime moved to its own location amongst the pines at this new building, I'm saying new building, which wasn't a new building, was dedicated to Alice on May 18th, 2007. And whereas Alice E. Souza has served the town with great excellence as the Executive Director of the Council on Aging, continually demonstrating exemplary service to the town of Dyton and its residents with great pride and distinction. And now, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, to hereby recognize and thank Alice E. Souza for her more than 40 years of dedicated service to the elders of our community. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Dyton to be affixed on this 9th day of February, 2022. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, Campuchico Chairman, Selectman Hall as our clerk, and Brett Segoff as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So I want to give this to you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, before we give you anything else, it's been a pleasure, pleasure working with you. You've always been dedicated. You've always worked hard for the scenes, which, as you know more than anybody, sometimes they're neglected, but you've always been there. I've been a big fan of Primetime. I think someday I'll be there, not as a volunteer. It is a great program, and you've done a wonderful job over there as well, as well as the other staff. And I think this is a testament to how much people love you by the number of people that came out here to celebrate this with you. I'm going to give you, in addition, I'm going to give you a card that many of us have signed. And Dr. Z, you want to come up as well as Selectman Hall? You give her this. Someone appeared and told me you love Russell Stover chocolates. I'm not saying that's what's in the bag.
Mr. Souza, on behalf of citizens of the town of Dyton, thank you for an incredible run. What you have done for this town, your contributions, the Primetime, and to the spirit and the love of this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I heard a lot about you before I came on this board, and then when I met you, it was all true. You are also an incredible inspiration to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You shouldn't do this.
I'm not going to cry, Alice. I promise. I don't want you to be upset.
I think I'd need more hands.
This is for you, and what I wanted to say to you is, it was such a privilege working with you. I can't believe you've given 40 years of your life to the town. It means a lot, and you're very appreciated, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for the good write-up you did for me, too.
Absolutely.
I heard so.
I'm glad you heard about it. Thank you so much. We can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
We owe you a debt of gratitude.
Thank you. I have to thank people, too, for all the things that they did for me. I had a lot of angels by my side. I ran into a few devils, too. Most of them were angels. I can count on one hand who the devils were, but that's okay. We've worked together. We've worked hard. We've had a good staff, a good board, a wonderful board. Always went along with the things that I thought were right, and they still are. I hope they stay that way. And I hope everything works out. And I'll still be around town. I'm not going anywhere. But I won't be in Dyton in the summertime. I'll be at safety. Other than that, I'll be around, in and out, and done about. So thank you so much for everything. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm out of here. I'll see you.
She's got the chocolate cheese out of here. Mr. Ferry, you want to say something? I know you're the chair, you know, the Council on Aging. I didn't slip and yawn at the end of the overtime.
Oh, no.
It'll be a few days after me.
We'd love to stay for the rest. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
It was our pleasure. We wanted this.
Oh, my God. I did. I started. I stopped myself. I could feel myself because.
Yeah. No, I, I, I see.
I'm going to continue the meeting. Okay, so the next agenda item is Tom Ferry, Highway Superintendent. He wants to appoint a new foreman. We did receive your letter. I'll read the letter, if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
Says to whom it may concern, from Tom Ferry, Superintendent, regarding the appointment of a new foreman, Class 1. Please consider Michael Barrowby for a Foreman, Class 1 vacancy. Michael has been with the Highway Department for five years and is our most senior qualified applicant. And this is submitted to us by Tom Ferry. Personally, I think you made a great choice. He's done a lot for the town. It's gone beyond the duty. He's done so many different things for the town. He's done a lot of the work, as well as other highway employees, but a lot of the work at the Town Hall as far as using wood from the James Briggs House. So it's, he's done a fantastic job.
Yes. Yeah, he's a very good representation of our department and the town, like you've mentioned. And just a plug for the whole crew. He's only been with us for five years. Only one other employee is right behind him, and the rest of them are two years or less. And I.
You know, that says more about you than.
Not me.
Than all these people leaving.
But the job they did, the job they did in that last blizzard.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
They did a tremendous job.
They did.
So they all want to serve the community.
And he's always in a good mood. He's friendly. I mean, you can always have a good conversation. He's always right there to help.
Correct.
So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Michael Barrowby as Foreman with the Dyton Highway Department. Do we need to say, is it effective immediately?
I think you wanted it immediately.
I would like, if possible, to, effective tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll adjust the.
Effective February 10th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion?
I think he's, like you said, he's done an excellent job, and he goes above and beyond. I've gotten so used to seeing him at Town Hall, and he's just like a part of the family. So his, his reputation and his work really precedes him.
Thank you. I want to call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is aye. So thank you, Tom. Mr. Ferry.
Thank you.
Selectman Hall?
I've read many great things on social media. I had the opportunity of meeting some of your men, have them explain to me what they had to endure during the last storm. Forty-eight hours out there working. One individual came into sleep in a fire bind that's not the most comfortable place in the world. I was curious if I could have the support to ask the town administrator to write a letter to be placed in the file of all the individuals of the DPW, including Mr. Ferry, for their outstanding efforts during this storm. When you take a look at the roads of Dyton compared to our neighbors, they do an incredible job. And I would like to put that in the form of a motion.
It's not, it's not on the agenda, but I, I think we can ask, I think we can, we'll ask, I think you brought up a valid point. I think we'll just ask that town administrator to write those letters, and I.
Yeah, no, that's more than worth it, Mr. Chairman. Selectman Hall, I'd be happy to do that. And Mr. Ferry?
May I make one more comment?
Dr. Z?
So I don't, I want to comment not just on the, the quality of the plowing. One observation that I also made, and it might be minor. I've noticed in other towns that after the snow was cleared, there's a lot of, like, potholes and a lot of other things, and I have not seen a lot of that in town. So I just wanted to thank everybody for not just being out there and getting rid of the snow, but actually, like, doing a good job and maintaining the roads while doing so. So I appreciate that, because my little car will lose a tire. Thank you.
And maybe we can include that in the letter.
Yes, not my, not my little car.
Thank you. The next agenda item is proclamation for Black History Month. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Black History Month serves as an opportunity to celebrate the positive and lasting differences, as well as the legacy that African-Americans have made on behalf of our nation's cultural and political life. And whereas in 1926, Dr. Kara G. Woodson, Notre Black Scholar and Harvard graduate, initiated Black History Week, and for many years, the second week of February was chosen to celebrate the contributions and achievements of African-American people in the United States so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And whereas in 1976, as an American, as Americans, celebrated the National Bicentennial, President Gerald Ford urged the nation to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every areas of endeavor throughout our history. And for the first time, Black History Month was celebrated nationwide. And whereas the theme of Black History Month 2022 is Black Health and Wellness, a theme in underscoring the rich legacy of everything from Black scholars, medical practitioners, and midwives, to more recent initiatives focused on mental health for people of color. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to democratic ideals. And whereas the Town of Dyton continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Dyton, to hereby proclaim February 2022 to be Black History Month, and urge all citizens of the Town of Dyton to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in observance. And it's signed by Campuchico, Selectman Hall, and Dr. Z, Brett Segoff. So I will entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the proclamation for Black History Month as prepared and read this evening.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's not directly related to this, ma'am. I just wanted to comment. I had the pleasure of reading it. I do not get it sent to my house. There was one in the office. So I had the pleasure of reading the strawberry vine. And I just wanted to point out to anyone who's interested, there was a beautiful story written by Myrna Santos, our town historian, about, that kind of chronicles a Black Ditonian's life. I'm forgetting the gentleman's name, but it's a beautiful story. I really would urge everyone to read it, especially if you get it at your house. And it was just, I wanted to thank Mrs. Santos for doing that. It was really beautiful. Thank you.
I do get it to my house. Not everybody makes it to this age, and I think Selectman Hall will soon be getting it when he turns 60.
He'll be looking, checking his mailbox.
But it's a very good thing for the town of Dyton. So I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is aye. Let's see what's next. Is it public input? I put it away already.
It is, yes.
Before announcements?
Yes.
Okay. Public input. Superintendent Ferry?
I get the strawberry vine, too. To my house.
Is it because you're on the Council on Aging, Chairman?
So speaking of Council Aging, that's what I, I kind of need your board's consensus. So as you know, we're seeking a new director. It's, the job is posted and advertised, job description's out there. Some of the key elements besides that was, we need some more staff in primetime. And that was part of the snafu we had earlier. So there's some key part-time help that's needed. So our board is working with it. We're going to finish the details next Wednesday. But we're thinking about on the 23rd, from 9:00 to 2:00, have a combination job fair and open house. So families can inquire about their family needs there, and also check out what jobs are available for the part-time and volunteers, and also the director. And in the future, we know Sheila's retiring, too. She's okay with that being explored also. So we'll have a job fair, open house on the 23rd. I'm thinking utilizing our message boards next week to advertise that. And I don't know if there's an actual vote needed or whatnot. I don't know.
Do you think we ought to wait for the director to be appointed first, or are you, do you think we ought to appoint the executive director first and then have this job fair and?
No, I think the job fair will get the applications people in hand so they can review, so we can remove as many hurdles as possible. I'm not saying hire.
Right. So she'll, she or he.
Right. We'll have, we'll have as much work as possible done moving forward.
That makes sense. What's, does the board feel about it? Selectman Hall?
The only question that I have is, are all these positions in the fiscal '22 budget? So they would be starting soon, or are you waiting to start them in fiscal '23?
They're all out of the revolving fund from primetime itself.
Okay.
So what pays for that is the clients that come in will pay for the staff. That's where that's from.
I support it, Mr. Chairman.
I, I support it, too. I'm not sure we were able to take a vote since it's not on the agenda, but I think we all support it.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
I'm more interested in using the message boards, because it's.
Yeah, no, that's, people love the message.
I don't know if any need next week at this time. I mean, if something urgent with border health comes up, obviously, that paramount. But we'll get it out there Wednesday-ish for the weekend, and then the following Wednesday is the open house ready.
And if you give that information to our town administration, we can put it on our Facebook page and let the public know.
Yeah, I think we have to update the town website, too. I'll need some help with that, to make sure those part-time positions are still there. I can't see them right now.
Okay. You can make sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements? I'll do the, one of the first ones. The annual town elections is on April 9th, 2022, at the Dyton Elementary School from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Nomination papers are available at the town clerk's office on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, for the following offices listed below. Last day to obtain papers is 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, February 17th, 2022. The deadline to return nomination papers to the town clerk's office is 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. For your name to be placed on the ballot, it is necessary to obtain at least 33 signatures of registered voters, 1% of the total voters who voted for governor in the last state election, Chapter 53, Section 6. Those positions that are available is the Board of Assessors for three years, Dyton-Hobart Regional School Committee Member for three years, Parks and Recreation for three years, Planning Board for five years. You know, I didn't ask if anybody on Zoom wanted to participate in public input.
Do it right after this.
Okay, I'll finish reading this, but I don't want to neglect anybody there. Sewer Commissioner for three years, Town Clerk for three years, Town Collector for three years, Town Moderator for one year, and the Town Treasurer for three years. So, before we begin, talk about the other announcements, is there anybody on Zoom that would also like to participate in public input? I'm going to say that's a no. Okay. No, I don't, I think that's the,
Yeah, that was my,
The mouse.
Yeah, that was the mouse.
Oh, I got confirmation that the audio is good on the Zoom.
So, Dr. Zee, will you continue with the announcements, please?
Sure. If I may, and it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, can I read an announcement that's not on the agenda that I just came across?
Sure.
That's related to the first one. I received a notification from Senator Mark Pacheco that Northwoods Medical Center at 2005 Bay Street in Taunton is currently offering the COVID-19 vaccine and booster appointments for all eligible individuals statewide on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Thank you. Free rapid tests are being offered to all residents in the United States. The pre-order period for the at-home COVID-19 test via www.covidtest.gov has begun. Every household in the United States is eligible to order at-home COVID-19 tests. The tests are completely free and will usually ship in seven to twelve days. The Dayton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, February 19, 2022, at Town Hall in the lower level 979 Somerset Avenue. The Dayton Historical Society presents King Philip Meets J.K. Milliken, a discussion with author Eric Schultz. On Sunday, February 27, 2022, at 2:00 p.m. at the Friendship Hall, 2056 Elm Street. Admission is free, masks are required. So, for anyone interested in particularly North Dayton history and the old Spring Street mill, of which Mr. Milliken was very instrumental in designing and creating, that sounds like an awesome event. The town clerk's office is in need of an additional four to six election workers for elections and town meetings. If interested or would like more information, please reach out to the town clerk's office. And our town clerk is Mark Pacheco by calling 508-669-5411, option two. Did you want to add anything to that since you're here?
No, but I'll report that hopefully meeting some more poll workers.
Okay. Thank you. There will be a special election held on Saturday, March 5, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Dayton Elementary School for the proposed Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School Building Project. There is a dedicated section of the town website at www.dighton-ma.gov that has been created to provide information about the project. And I believe you also, our town administrator also included the presentation that they did, which really lays everything out. There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April 1, 2022. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. And a reminder that open burning season is from January 15 through May 1, between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. A $10 permit from Dayton Fire Rescue is required prior to any open burning, and you can purchase those online. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, I'm just going to stop sharing real quick. The first item is just an update on the FY '23 budget process. Like, we are now in the thick of the budget planning process. Our department, boards, and committees, they had until, they had until early this month to get their proposed budgets over to us. The town accountant and I, this week, we begin our meeting with departments, boards, and committees on them. Like, we also spent, our financial team spent the better part of yesterday afternoon, we spent the better part of yesterday afternoon meeting with our financial team. So, like, in taking a look at our revenues and making sure, so like, in making sure that our revenue is going in to fiscal year 2023 based on, so our revenue is going into '23 based on sound principles going forward. And we've already made, just in terms of the revenues that we have, that we're currently relying on in FY '22. We did a cut, so we did cut those revenues, but to the tune of around $400,000 yesterday based on, so based on how, so based on how our local receipts are act, based on how our local receipts are coming in this year. So, like, so then we're going to have a follow-up meeting next week to take another look at that as well. We, by the first meeting in March, we will have an update and a presentation to the board and to the public. So, we'll have a, so we'll have a presentation, so we'll have a presentation to the board and to the public about, so we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a presentation to the board and to the public about where we are. So, about, so about where we are with revenues before we kick off, before we kick off the border selection review process. So, so I just, so I just wanted to provide that update on the FY '23 budget. If there's any questions, it's a very, oh, it's a very active and fluid process. Oh, you know, and it will be for the next, it will be for the next, it will be for the next few weeks as we continue meeting with folks.
Dr. Zee, you had a question?
Yes. So, my first question is, and I'm sure that we did this. We sent an email out to like committee chairs.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The only thing is, for example, the Agricultural Commission, who is sort of like getting revitalized, becoming revitalized, didn't have a meeting until January. So, we, at that meeting, we did not discuss the budget. And I'm a non-voting member, but we have it on our agenda for next Tuesday. Like, is that too late?
No, no, that is helpful. Like, as long as that is on, so as long as that's on the agenda now and the committee is aware of that and is acting on it, that's fine. That is, so, so there are two, so, so there are two committees. We don't have a budget from that is one of them. So, and the, so and the other is a Commission on Disability. So, and I've been in touch with the ADA Coordinator, and I believe he's scheduled a meeting for the end, for the end of next week. He was telling me this morning.
When I talked to him yesterday, he was going to be scheduled for next Monday, but he had to make sure that everybody was going to be able to attend. I'm not sure that, I, I'm not sure if it's been posted, so I don't know. We can find that out.
I haven't seen anything yet. But he was aware of that, yes.
Then it'll probably be next Thursday, but we'll have that budget, obviously, to be pretty clear.
Yes, in place. And I have had a conversation with him about it this morning as well.
Thank you.
And then, and then, and then as a follow-up to the informational meeting that we had with BP, that we had on BP Monday night, if there's been, so as a, so as a follow-up to that informational meeting there, so as a follow-up to that informational meeting, there's been a lot of questions about, there's been, there's been a lot of questions about, been a lot of questions about the $800,000 in debt service and how we would fund, how we would fund that, how we would fund that $800,000 a year for the next thirty years. So, 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 so actually at the boards, at the boards, at the boards, at one's February 23 meeting, we're having our financial advisor in. We're having our financial advisor in, and we're going to walk, so we're gonna, so we're going to walk through, so we're going to walk through our ability to do that. So, so based, so based on the fact that the debt, and based on the fact that the debt, based on the fact that the debt will cost, based on the fact that the debt will cost eight, so $800,000 a year, we will need a debt exclusion. So, like, and we'll be talking about that more with, so more with our financial advisor, like, on the 23rd while in advance of the vote, while in advance of the vote on March 5. So, I just wanted to give, so I just want to give everyone a heads up that we are planning for that. So, I just want to give everyone's a heads up that we're planning for that and looking at that now. So, we're able, so we're able to present that, so we're able to present that information to the public in advance of the election.
Yeah, I saw on social media that we hope it's having the vote on March 5 also, but they're also having a debt exclusion on the same day. I'm not advocating that at all.
Yeah, no, I don't think,
They're letting the public, obviously, to decide which way they want to vote, but they're advocating that people vote yes on a debt exclusion because how it's going to impact their operating budget. They, we can't deal with the schools. I mean, we can't cut back money that we're going to owe to the schools, but they were saying the operating budget, and probably what we're going to hear in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's the same way.
It's going to impact, and they said things are going to have to happen if that happens. So, it's, I'm glad we're going to think about it, talk about it, and wait.
Yeah, and go forward with everybody informed at the outset. And that's what I really want to try to make sure happens here. So, we're all informed about what that funding really means.
And let's wait for the vote, Selectman Hull.
This question is actually for Mr. Pacheco.
Which one?
Town Clerk Mark Pacheco, not to be confused with Senator Mark.
This is Mark with a K.
My father was Pacheco too. I mean, it's just, there's a lot of Pachecos out there.
It is my understanding that should the voters on March 5 vote in favor of the project, that we have not, we will not be able to have the debt exclusion vote at the April town meeting because of deadline requirements we'll have passed. Do you have a date in mind if we need to go forward with a debt exclusion?
You actually could. It's thirty-five days before the election. So, you actually could put it on the annual town meeting.
Well, it's, it's close though, huh? Wow, it's close.
It's close. So, I came to talk about annual town meeting on your agenda. So, that's something that you guys, that's a good decision if you wanted to put it on. Okay.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for town administrator?
No, I have a beer.
We have no old business, Selectmen's report. I'll start off a couple of things. COVID numbers greatly improved from January 31st to twenty, of 2022 to February 6. We had twenty confirmed positive cases. Previous week, we had thirty-one. Previous week before that was seventy-seven. Previous week before that was ninety-two. And the previous week before that was a hundred and forty-five. So, things are looking better. We still have about sixty-two percent, I think, of our residents are fully vaccinated. I don't think that includes boosted, but fully vaccinated. Selectman Hull had asked me to give a report on the Bristol Plymouth Regional, no, the Bristol County Advisory Board meeting, which he is a member, but because he had a prior commitment regarding the discussion regarding a new superintendent for the school, he asked me to attend. It was a very interesting meeting, but he asked me to give a report. We approved a contract for the support staff for Bristol County. First year, fiscal year is one and a half percent. Second year is two percent, and the third year is two percent also. So, I thought that that was a reasonable contract. I wasn't, you may have been more informed on that contract than I was, but the rates were pretty reasonable, so I voted yes on that.
Absolutely, thank you.
And we also got a, some information on the oppo funding. They indicated that towns can begin submitting their requests to the county. The county's got $10 million that they can distribute to all cities and towns in Bristol County. It's quite a few of us, but we can start submitting our requests. I know we have, we separately have some interests and maybe jointly we have some interests, but it's good to hear that that's being moved along. The meeting was about a half an hour. I'm not sure how long it is when you attend, but it was a quick meeting, I thought. That was an interesting meeting.
The meetings that I've attended in the past have been longer because they've had discussions in regards to oppo and the criteria they're going to use in what projects they would accept and what projects they would not accept.
They, they really didn't get into what they would accept. But that would be interesting if you can have a conversation with town administrator about that so we can begin the process of,
Absolutely.
We had, at the last meeting, I gave my five-year plans, and we have Dr. Zee is going to give his five-year plan as well as Selectman Hull, I believe. Dr. Zee?
Thank you. I did submit this in for the record, and I gave it to Mrs. Brady and my colleagues. So, the first project is the town hall, what we'll call, I guess, a renovation, inner, interior. The interior renovation project on the upper level of town hall is progressing at the intended speed. The new town clerk's office and town clerk slash town treasurer reception counter is complete. This new area offers a professional space in which to conduct town-related business. The building commissioner and the highway department, including Mr. Berabe, who is the foreman as of tomorrow, created a beautiful new counter which includes an accessible area that was constructed entirely in-house using recycled materials from previously demolished historical structures, such as the James Briggs House. We will now move to the restroom and exterior upgrades using MOD grant funds because the grant carries a tight deadline of June 2022, end of the fiscal year, I believe. Once the accessibility upgrades are completed, we will focus on the town treasurer slash collector's office and the new copier slash mailroom in the second half of this year. Sewer extension, and Mr. Administrator, you may have something to add, but I kind of just wanted to highlight where we are, not relitigate where we've been. We are currently holding meetings with Woodard and Curran to discuss options and the feasibility of extending sewer down Route 138 or Route 44. And just to remind people, Route 138, there already is a feasibility study for that. We recently met with the sewer commission, whose main input was asking if residents would be able to vote on the matter. Of course, they would, but we are nowhere near anything like that. This really is in its infancy still. We are currently waiting to hear back from Woodard and Curran regarding whether or not there would be a moratorium on digging on Route 44 due to the recent paving by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation or Mass DOT. And it made it sound like whether or not there is, there probably is a moratorium, but we just need clarity on like the length of time and all that. So, we wait to hear back. And that was all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Hull?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Following my five-year plan, I would like to also speak about several updates in regards to the superintendent's search, the budget process, as well as a extremely important decision made by both the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Department of, of, I'm sorry, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in regards to the mask mandate. In regards to the five-year plan, three areas that I was asked to be involved with, the Water District, the Bristol County Trustees that we spoke on earlier, and the Department of Public Works. One of the most important things that I see in working in all three areas is developing good lines of communication with the town, its residents, and those departments. In the case of the Water District, in the case of Bristol County in particular, it seems that the desire of, at the state level, is for more regional agreements and more cooperation. In the case of water and in sewer, these independent commissions or districts, if you will, the state is encouraging closer ties. And with that in mind, they are funning, funneling funds through the town almost in a way that it is going to force those private entities, such as the Water District or the Sewer District, to work closely with us. Great example of that, oppo funds. Those come through us. How they are spent is going to be a decision that we're going to make as a board. Some of the funding is coming from the state level. Some of it is coming from Bristol County Agricultural School, $1.5 million. With that in mind, it appears, as the representative, my discussions have been in that direction with town administrator, the focus being on repeaters for the Fire Department and the Police Department is a great need. Our communication, especially in the outlying reaches of the town, is difficult at times. The second area is to assist the Water District in their search. Water District in their search for additional water resources. The funding is for broadband communication, water and sewer. And one may ask, why isn't sewer included in, in these discussions? We have $1.5 million. The issue of the repeaters is it reached the point of public safety and very important. It needs to be done ASAP. Sewer is looking at somewhere between 20 to 22 million dollars. And in our meetings that we had with Representative Congressman Agenclaus, we are going to need federal help to make that happen. In regards to the Bristol County Trustees, in addition to the oppa funds, it appears that they have a project that they are trying to develop and, and working closely with us because their building is located in the town of Dayton. And as a result, our committees, Building Commission, as well as Solar Group, is that a commission or is that the Solar Advisory Group? Is that a committee or is it just a committee or one?
There isn't one.
There isn't one?
No, we don't have one. We had like a committee that helped us become a green community, but they haven't met in three years, four years maybe?
Well, it's my understanding that Mrs. Gulat is, is involved.
She's involved as, as relates to stormwater, but she's worked on pilot, as a former selectman, she's worked on pilot agreements and we've asked her to continue.
So we will, Mrs. Gulat, myself, Town Administrator Mullin, will continue to work with Bristol Aggie as they go forward, exploring green energy projects in particular, and right now, the potential for expansion of solar at the facility.
Like, oh, may I ask you a question? Were there any specifics given? Are they thinking canopies? Are they thinking on the solar panels on the roofs? Or maybe they're not?
So they're thinking rooftop.
At this time.
They're thinking rooftop panels only at this time.
Okay.
In our discussions with renovation projects, with the Bristol Plymouth project, with some of the discussions, the early stages that we've had in Gadsden, Dayton Elementary, Dayton Middle, there is, and high school, there are, and I'll speak more about the high school situation. There are a lot of to talk about exploration of solar in particular, expansion of solar to help mitigate the cost of electricity. They're all talking about it. Bristol Aggie has made the initial step at opening discussions about putting it on the roof. But I've also heard the potential of wind and solar, if it is feasible. In regards to the Water District proposals, we all know about the Main Street Project that should be happening sometime this summer, tentatively August, September. There are negotiations in regards to the Brook Street Project. That Brook Street purchase from the town of Somerset will significantly improve our ability to meet our water demands. However, as I mentioned earlier, with oppa funding, we are also looking to help them with additional water sources. And lastly, the DPW, Mr. Ferry's Department needs a great deal of upgrades. We have a meeting coming up with Department of Environmental Protection to talk about the condition of our town garage and the fuel depot and the possibility of moving those facilities, how feasible it is to move it to the landfill. And then the last two projects, one is related along the lines of the landfill, are the feasibility of placing solar farm, if you will, at the DPW. One of the things that many town residents have asked, they are curious, is if with some of the land that the town owns, if we could establish our own solar projects and use the funds to assist other capital improvement projects, earmark that money specifically for capital improvement projects. It's no question from the expenses that I've mentioned, potential expenses, the library, the fire department, that we're going to need funding sources. High school, elementary, middle school projects, all these projects coming down, that potentially are coming down the pipe, Bristol Plymouth, how are we going to pay for all this? And that is one option that many people have suggested. So we're going to take a look at the, um, the solar project. And the last one is something that really needs to be done and looked at, is the bridge down on Pleasant Street. I believe that bridge was built 1944?
1914.
1914. As a result, its condition is very much at risk. I, I, I'm, one of the things that I really would like to focus on is funding sources outside of operational capital improvement. One of the things that I, I do bring to the table is that I am a certified grant writer, and I would like to work closely with Town Administrator Mullin and Dr. Z. in that area. I know Dr. Z. has had tremendous success and brought in a great deal of money to the town in that area, and we need to do that. The taxpayer just cannot afford.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Hall. Dr. Z.
It's not an insult. I say it all the time, right? It's a compliment. Um, I wanted to ask, and I believe I had asked you the other day, Town Administrator, I know you're super busy. We had had a discussion about how do we figure out how projects are being selected in terms of monies from the bipartisan infrastructure bill? And I know you don't have all the answers and I doubt, there's probably many, there's probably, nobody out there knows how these projects are being picked. But a lot of things have come across my feed, in particular, in the news section on Facebook, and it's a lot of local news. And it's a lot of stories of these other towns getting all this billions and millions of, I'm not even exaggerating, $9 billion has been either earmarked or they're already starting to distribute some of the monies for certain bridge projects. And I still want to know how do, A, we figure out that process of getting the money, B, is it already determined? Are things already, is money's already been set aside for specific projects? And C, if not, going back to point A, how on earth do we get our projects in? So I don't, you might have answers. I would love them. But to your point, I agree. We, taxpayers cannot afford all this in terms of new taxes. Like, we pay federal taxes, we pay state taxes. I feel like, and I know we all agree, our job is to try to, it's all a pie. That's what a budget is. It's a pie. We want to try to take the most of that pie back to Dayton for the money we've already all paid. So I'm with you there.
Well, when we, with Senator Mark Pacheco and State Representative Pat Hadad and Congressman Jake, we've had this conversation with them. I think maybe we need to have that conversation again. I've seen on social media, the same thing you're seeing, I saw that the cities were getting money for bridges, but I haven't seen towns getting money, which is not very right. I don't know if they're playing into it, but there's more voters in cities versus towns.
Shocking.
I know. That would be political. But that's something we need to pursue.
Yeah, we need to fight for that funding, for sure.
Also, like, to that point, and Selectman Hall wants to speak, to that point though, I really am starting to resent the, the feeling out there that like because towns might have less people, they must be better off. That's, every community has issues that need to be addressed, okay? We have a community where a lot of our infrastructure has not been either really maintained the way it needs to be, or it's just time. Things, it's, it's entropy. It's just chemistry. Like, things deteriorate over time. And that's where we are. We have real problems and we already have taxpayers, as you all know, who are already like at the max. You know, there's, we're, we're draining lemonade from a rock at this point. Like, we need that money from the pie to come back here. So.
I think of seniors who are on a fixed income, how this will impact.
Yeah, they don't get extra money.
No, they don't. Selectman Hall?
In regards to the bridge, we had a wonderful meeting with Pat Hadad, and she has been incredibly supportive. And she had talked about the possibility of pursuing state funding through a Home Rule budget request. I attempted to reach out to Senator Pacheco and I wasn't successful. I was wondering if Dr. Z. or Mr. Mullin would have more success in reaching out to Senator Pacheco to see, one, if someone from his staff could meet with us to discuss the possibility of that. And secondly, to ask him about the merits of working closely with Pat Hadad in sponsoring a bill, both in the House and the Senate, in, in regard to that.
Can I piggyback off that? Because I think that's a great idea.
Through the chair.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I am happy to follow up with our senator on that. My other thought is, because we are a small but mighty town, but that bridge connects Dayton to Somerset, so I'm actually thinking what we should do is reach out, if you could, or I'm fine doing it too, reaching out to the Somerset Town Administrator, because I feel like that bridge should be important to them as well. There are Somerset residents who live on Pleasant Street that will have to go around to County Street if they want to go to Dayton. So, which is probably great for Alice's in 1712, but not great for the residents. So my question is, can we reach out to either the Somerset Town Administrator or the Somerset Board of Selectmen, whomever?
Yep.
And ask if they also would be interested in doing like a joint, I don't want to say letter or some kind of joint effort, let's call it, right? Where we're working together. Because I've noticed that more things get done when either, I don't want to use this term because I'm not advocating to regionalize anything, but I notice when there are more communities, like that grant that we just got with all the local communities.
Oh, the public health grant.
Correct. You're more likely to get something when you are banded together with another town or city or something. So I just feel like that might be better, actually.
We're running, and Mr. Ferry has left, we're reaching a point with that bridge where public safety is going to be a real concern.
And it's going to be, I don't want to say it's going to be, but we want to avoid a situation like the Briggs Street Bridge, for example, which is like out of view. Like, we don't want that. We know what the problem is. We don't, we don't have the money. So we need to be resourceful and really, like I said, team up, team up with the other community that the project affects. Like, I know it must affect them. So I'm on board and any way you want me to help, I'm happy to.
So I just have a quick thought. If it's okay, like at the meeting, at the meeting where we talked with the beta group, so at the meeting, at the meeting we talked with the beta group, we talked about updating Rep. Hadad and, so we talked about, so we talked about, we talked about updating Rep. Hadad and Senator Pacheco based on where we are and what we were funding. So what we were funding, so what we were funding in terms of the engineering. So, so I mean, so, so, so at this point, the town has, so at this point, so at this point, the town has funded $150,000. So I think an update in a letter from the board, so I think like an up, so I think like an up, so I think an update from, so I think an update from the board in a letter saying that we, so saying that we, so saying that we pony up the 150, but asking for continued support would be, oh, actually helpful at this point, you know? So we keep this on our, so, so I think that, so I think that would be helpful. So we keep it on, so we keep it on like their radar at this point. Sorry about that. But yeah, if the board wanted to do that.
I'm totally fine with that.
Yep.
And have no, no issue as long as my colleagues are amenable. My only request or my only ask is that in the future, at some point, the engineering will be done, right?
Yes.
And at some point, we will have an idea of like how much the project would cost and all that. At that point, we need to have a specific ask. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, like we have like a rough ass now. Like, so like if they can earmark a general amount with a more specific ask really to come in the future, at least they know the general amount. So like that general amount is around approximately 1.2, so the general amount is around 1.2, so the general amount is around $1.7 million. So at least they can plan on that conceptually. So, uh, so, so in 10 months, then we can update them and it's going to be around there.
Has a feasibility study been completed?
Uh, yes, yeah. We have an alternative analysis. So we have a general number of 1.7, but this engineering is going to give us a.
Specific, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah, like a way more detailed and specific number.
Understood. I think that was a good discussion.
School Department, if I could?
Absolutely, yeah.
There was a lot going on in the school department. There is, this, Selectman is very excited about the discussions that are going on, both pro and con. We have people on both sides, Robert and Dayton, working very closely together on several issues. One issue, the school committee this week conducted interviews for the current superintendent's position. Dr. Craig Levis and Dr. Andrea Schwab were already interviewed. Tomorrow, Mr. William Rooney of Attleboro will be interviewed. And also, they had today and yesterday meet and greets in which the public has been able to meet Mr. Levis and Ms. Schwab. And tomorrow, Mr. Rooney from 4:00 to 5:00 PM in the cafeteria at Dayton Robert Bridger High School will be there if the citizens would like to meet with them. Once the interviews are completed, the members of the school committee will be visiting the school districts of these three candidates. Mr. Levis is from, he's the superintendent of Coventry Public Schools in Rhode Island. Ms. Schwab is the assistant superintendent, Wayham Public, and Mr. Rooney is the principal of Attleboro High School. And then they will review the references for these individuals. And it is their goal to have a superintendent named by March 1st. The second issue that they discussed last night, and I don't think their letter had anything to do with it or their discussion, but their timing speaks volumes about how the board of, sorry, the school committee feels on the issue of masks and the mask mandate. Last evening, the school committee voted to send a letter asking that the mandate for all students come to an end. Well, this morning at 10:00 AM, I received notification from Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health that mask mandate for students will end officially on February 28th. So on March 1st, the mandate will no longer be in place. People have asked what direction the. People have asked what direction the district is going to go. I think their letter last night, the majority of the members voted in favor of it, speaks that the questions and the issues that Mr. Pilling and Ms. Mello have had to deal with in regards to the school department over masks, basketball games, and concerts, and other activities, group activities, will come to an end. They also did a great deal of budget deliberation last evening, and they are looking for some increases. The number, now, is still going to have some more discussions, and I mention this because public input is obviously really important. The process will include FinCom and Board of Selectmen, so I'm sure there are going to be opportunities for the public. But there were not a lot of people at the budget deliberations of the school department, and I would encourage the public to be involved. The number they threw out last night was an increase of six point seven percent. They are looking for additional staffing in the area of an assistant to the nurses at the high school and at, in our case, Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle. They're also looking for Beckwith and Palmer River as well. They are also looking to have building special education coordinators, which is, I asked them, that would be a salaried position. I had advocated, and I will, and I told them, told Dr. Azar when I spoke publicly, that I would be advocating, as many communities have done, taught and included, going with building team leaders, which is a stipend position, which is significantly less. Team leaders teach, as well as do I E Ps and pick up additional duties for a stipend, not a full-time salary. They're also going to be asking, they're not sure if it'll be a capital improvement or a special article at this time for ADA upgrades at Dayton E. Hobbit Regional High School. And I might add that those ADA upgrades are federal requirements. I believe, I know in some projects, Mr. Gales has been directly involved. They didn't speak specifically about the high school, but they did say that Mr. Gales has been involved in their ADA upgrades. And from my understanding with Mr. Gales, that process has gone very fluidly, and they have been very cooperative with Mr. Gales.
Thank you. The next agenda item is to review, discuss, and act the warrant for annual town election. We receive this to either of the constables of the town of Dayton, County of Bristol. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the town of Dayton qualified to vote in elections to meet at the Dayton Elementary School for precincts one, two, and three on Saturday, the ninth of April, twenty twenty-two, at seven A.M. Then and there to be, to elect by ballot the following offices. Selectman for three years, town moderator for one year, assessor for three years, Dayton E. Hobbit Regional School District Committee member for three years, planning board member for five years, public library trustee for three years, parks and recreation commissioner for three years, sewer commissioner for three years, town clerk for three years, town collector for three years, town treasurer for three years. For this purpose, the polls will be open at seven A.M. and shall close at five P.M. You are directed to serve the warrant by posting attested copies thereof at each of the post offices, at the town hall, and at the main fire station, all in said Dayton, seven days at least before the time of said meeting. Hereof fail not and make do return of this warrant with your doing thereon to the town clerk at that time, at that time, and place at said meeting. Give it under the, our hands this ninth day of February in the year of two thousand and twenty-two, and it will be signed by the Selectman. Do you want to comment about this, Tom Clark?
The only thing I want to say, thank you for reading that, is, like Mr. Hall correctly asked about the, any ballot questions. If you sign this tonight, you wouldn't be able to put a ballot question on the election. So, you have plenty of time. I need any ballot questions thirty-five days before the election in writing. So, I just wanted to make that clear before you vote on signing the election.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we, give me one second. We approve the annual town election warrant as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? If you're not a call.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, Mrs. Gulat?
I heard you discussing Bristol Plymouth bond debt exclusion earlier. When are we going to vote on the Aggie School debt exclusion? They're in the process of going out to bonding, and their business manager asked me what the status was when we were at the meeting about Sola a week ago. And I told him I would speak to the town administrator. So, I didn't hear you mention Aggie debt exclusion, and Aggie's a done deal. We're not waiting for a vote from the citizens. So, I'm just wondering if you would consider putting this on the ballot with the election since, again, it's a done deal.
Yeah, I think we're going to have the financial management team speak to us.
The financial advisor come on the twenty-third, and she can talk about everything all combined with all the same numbers.
Will we still be within the timeframe that the town clerk mentioned?
Yes, he needs thirty-five days before the election, the, March fifth is the election on B.P., so we can, I'm not saying we wait till March fifth, actually, we can't wait till March fifth, but we can discuss it at our next meeting and decide whether or not we're going to have just one or two of the debt exclusions on the ballot for April ninth, is it?
Okay, again, I was just concerned that, since only B.P. was mentioned, I just wanted to remind you about Aggie, and that did come up. Later in the meeting on the public input, I have additional information on the Aggie Sola, the Pleasant Street Bridge, an update on Dora Estates. So, I'm going to hang around for the next public input, just to bring you up to speed on where we are, what work's been done on those, just so you know, okay?
I appreciate that, thank you. Selectman Hall. Selectman Hall.
In regards to the Bristol Aggie decision, I want to make, oh, that the voters understand, before they go into panic mode, that there's a potential of two debt exclusions, that the financial committee is going to come in, and I'm going to be asking specifically if there are other ways to fund that project other than a debt exclusion. And obviously, the question to be asked is, could that funding be paid for out of the operating budget rather than a debt exclusion? I don't have an answer to that question. I'm going to be looking for the financial team, not only to advise us, but also to advise residents of this town, because ultimately, it's going to be them who are going to be paying the bill. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept a warrant for being.
Mr. Pacheco.
If there's any chance that you want to put, just based on your commentary.
Yes.
If there's any chance you want to put something on the ballot on this election, you would want to wait until the next meeting. But if you guys don't want to put the Aggie on, you can vote to approve the warrant, if that makes sense. I wouldn't approve the warrant if you guys, if there's any chance you guys want to put something on the ballot.
Yeah, that makes, is that okay with town administrator? That we should hold off on voting on this until the February twenty-third meeting in case we're adding something to the ballot? Because this is, yeah, correct, this is what's going to be on the warrant, and if we.
So then, there's no going back.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, like, I also, so in, so in terms of all the issues out there, though, like, I think we really need to educate the voters and the residents where we are financially before we do put them on. So, so, so if I, so if I, so if I had a recommendation, it would be to approve the ballot, right? So, so it would be to approve the ballot tonight, so it would be to approve the ballot tonight, and when we're ready for that exclusion, we could have a special election.
May I, can I piggyback off that, if you don't mind?
No.
Is that okay? My other, I'm not even so much concerned about that. My main concern is, and I totally understand Assessor Gulat's point about Aggie being a done deal, but I still think that we, we should try to take this time to educate people about the projects. And I understand it's a done deal, okay? I supported it, Assessor Gulat supported it, and Chairman Pacheco supported it, so that's not the issue. I'm also concerned about having them both on the same ballot, because I wouldn't want uncertainty over the one of the projects to affect the Aggie School project. So, those are my concerns, but I do agree with the town administrator.
Selectman Hall.
If we went by paying for it through the operational budget, would the townspeople vote, or would the Board of Selectmen?
Townspeople would.
Townspeople.
Always at a town meeting, yeah. But we, we would vote, like.
Recommendation.
Correct, yeah, we always make our recommendations on what goes on, on that warrant for town meeting.
Okay.
So, town administrator, your suggestion is that we vote on this tonight and that we do not add the debt exclusion to the ballot for April ninth, either Bristol Aggie.
Yeah, yeah, that would be my recommendation, I think, to do everything and to, so, and to have all the information and the explanation and the clarity out there by April ninth would be way too much, all too soon.
And it's, it's not fair to residents, we think about it.
No, I mean, it's a lot at once, they're considering the project right now, then a month after.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we need a chance, really, to educate and, oh, and at the end of the day, I understand how these projects are affecting us financially.
My only question is, is Mr. Pacheco okay with that? Tom Clark.
Ultimately, it's, it's a Board of Selectmen's decision, and I, Mike being on the financial team, I know they've given it some thought, so I defer to Mike, and I have full confidence in the financial team.
Okay.
Selectman Hall.
I, I wanted to just, no, I told you, it's not an insult. I just wanted to make one last comment about why I made my previous comment. I think for those of us who recall, whether you are on the board or not on the board, we all remember the police station vote. There was a strong, and I mean strong, public education component. Mrs. Brady, you'll remember, and Chairman Pacheco and Selectman Hall, they did a whole presentation at the town meeting, they had pictures, they had everything. I mean, it was so clear that they needed a facility constructed for them and their needs, not retrofitted for them in, in the aftermath of some decision. It won by forty votes. So, what I am saying and why I'm asking for time, or why I think it's prudent to take some time, is because even after a year campaign of educating people on why that project was so important, it still only won by forty votes. It was razor thin, if, you know, Nana stayed home that day, I mean, that could have made the difference. So, I just want to, stop, Mike. I just want to point that out, that we, especially for the Aggie project, we, that was a labor of love, and I remember the endless meetings that Assessor Gulat went to as the liaison from the Board of Selectmen. That, that was a, it took a long time to get here, and we need that debt exclusion vote to pass. So, that's why I made those comments.
Yo, and the B.P. one, I'm sorry, like, and the B.P. one, like, is eight hundred thousand dollars. That, oh, and that carries with it, like, a lot of magnitude, so we really need to explain what that magnitude means in relation to our town budget.
And where it's going to, and as you said, where it's going to come from. That's like a serious.
Yes.
You're going to tell people where the money comes from. Do we have the money? We're still, newsflash, paying off the police station, and will be for quite some time, which I supported, that project. So, this is where we are, it's real. It's real, it's crunch time, and we're going to need the public to be educated on why the projects are important. I mean, because you're, you might have people come out who support the project even though it's against what their pocketbook, you know, is dictating. So, they need to know why. They need to know why this is important, and then give them the facts, and they make their decision based on what's best for them. I think that's how it should work.
And we do have time on this. Even if it passes, it's not, we're not going to get the bill the next day, so.
No, we have a year and a half until it really hits.
You all set?
No, no, I, I just, you know, the Bristol Aggie situation is, is much different. It's a hundred and ten million.
No, it's a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, but the.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm talking about.
A hundred and five million for the.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they weren't knocking, they weren't building everything new.
And we have a finished product. Bristol Plymouth Project should be defeated, they can go back to the drawing board. Bristol Aggie is, as Mrs. Gulat said, a done deal.
Correct.
And I think it would create a, a huge mess. Because we are committed to pay for it, both for the town administration, trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it, because it'd have to come out of the operating budget. And also, it would be horrible public relations with a county, Bristol Agricultural School and their Board of Trustees. We've developed some really, really good relations. They have representatives on the Dayton Industrial Development Commission. It would be very bad for the town if we reneged at all.
And the school is here. It's almost symbolic in that.
We have to pay one way or the other.
And we, and we should, we were all proud to support that. I mean, so, and their public outreach and education, bringing the Selectmen along at every step of the way with the different options, it was just different from, from the other situation. I, I'm, that's why I'm a bit hesitant to, to lump them together on one, one ballot, although I understand the cost and all that of having a, a special town election, I understand. But that's how I feel about it.
And regarding Bristol Aggie, we were fortunate to have Mrs. Gulat, because she kept the board informed at all times as to what was going on with the project.
Good liaison work.
Mr. Members of the board, I'll make a special request. If Aggie is not going to be on the April election by itself, only Aggie, not the other bond, potential bond issue, that when you know you're going to put it out, I agree with Dr. Z. If B.P. passes, I would not put those two debt exclusions out for a vote together because I think they're going to be battling with one another. And one, the commitment has already been made by every community in the county. The paying Aggie out of the operating budget or any huge capital expense is a disaster because if your budget is totaled twenty-three million and you deduct the operating costs for schools and capital that we already have, that leaves you the rest of your budget to operate the town on. If you put the bond issue payment for Aggie in there, you further deduct from the total amount that you have for the town. Outside of the town budget as an exclusion, eventually, it's going to go away. But, again, I agree with Dr. Z. I don't think it's a good idea to put them together, and I think if, and I realize that could cause an extra meeting or an additional cost for election. But I think the two projects, especially Aggie's, got to be presented to the voters by itself and everything that goes with it, and if B.P. passes, it should be done separately.
I agree. And I feel like, to your point, Assessor Gulat, I almost feel like for, for us to have included both on the same ballot would almost indicate to residents erroneously that they are a package deal, which is not the case. So, I agree with you.
Or, or it might be pick one.
Yeah, that's more likely, exactly.
There can't, there can't be a pick one if Aggie is in the map, in the mix. It can't be, all right? And yes, you're, it's exactly right. And what Selectman Hall said, back in the day, when. And yes, you're, it's exactly right, and what Selectman Hull said, um, back in the day when the second vote was taken, cause the first vote, uh, to build it was invalidated, cause we, they found that we actually didn't have a quorum that day. Uh, I think, Dr. Z, you'll remember that Mister, um, uh, Jack was chairman then.
Yes.
And we actually voted again, the board voted again for me to go to that second meeting and vote in support, that Dyton was behind it, and that's exactly what happened.
Yes, that's true.
Thank you, so I think we're in agreement that we should, um, vote on the warrant for the annual town election, as is, so entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrant for the annual town election as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I just ask to, uh, Assessor Gulart's point, um, that we do keep the Aggie School project and its happenings on our radar, especially in terms of some education, cause it's still gonna be required, and then the eventual debt exclusion vote at a special town election. Thank you.
Should we ask them to come in and do a presentation?
Not on debt exclusion.
Have who come in?
The Aggie.
No, it's, we, it's our decision, it's the residents' decision as to how we're gonna.
That's right.
I wanna be more clear, I'm sorry, I think it's.
That's not part of the motion, like, can we just focus on the motion that we had before us? Uh, I'll call for a vote, then, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye. So I'll return to you, Selectman Hull, if you wanna.
No, no, I, I asked the question, I got the answer, I wasn't looking for a line, I, yeah.
Uh, thank you, uh.
Thank you, have a good night.
We got a, uh, memorandum from, sent to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, uh, from Heather Nakora, from the Highway Department Administrator of Assistant, dated January twenty-fifth, regarding surplus equipment for disposal. Please be advised, the following will be added to surplus, two keyboards, two monitors, two laptops, Panasonic Windows XP Professional, model number DFQ X three nine nine three X eight, and one Dell OptiPlex seven five five with Dell monitor. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion to place into surplus equipment for disposal from the Dyton Highway Department two keyboards, two monitors, two laptops, Panasonic Windows XP Professional, and one Dell OptiPlex seven fifty-five with Dell monitor.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye, I'm sorry.
And, uh, Camp Pacheco is an aye, you expect me to call you Selectman Hull again, right?
I didn't know you were really talking to.
Uh, the next agenda item is the review discussing acting on hybrid vehicle for inspections. Uh, this letter, uh, is dated February seventh. Uh, dear Mr. Fordy, please accept the updated letter of intent, which supersedes the February first, twenty twenty-two letter to award the town of Dyton invitation to bid IFB twenty-one dash O two for a hybrid inspectional vehicle to DMR Corporation doing business as Route forty-four Toyota. The proposed enclosed contract award will be presented for approval to the Dyton Board of Selectmen during the upcoming meeting on Wednesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we appreciate your willingness to work with the town of Dyton on this important purchase, please do not hesitate to contact me at any time with any questions. And it's, uh, signed by Town Administrator Mike, uh, Mullin. Should we know that we, in our packet, we've given all the information on this particular hybrid, uh, vehicle, and as to who's gonna, uh, where we're gonna purchase it from?
What is going on?
I wanna say it's Mike's car, but that, that would be a guess.
It's, it's, it's someone beeping, it's not an alarm.
Yeah, you don't think it's an alarm?
No, it's not rhythmic and, at all.
So does anybody have any questions about this?
Um.
Nope, somebody's not in trouble.
I don't, I have more of a comment than a question.
Yes.
Um, to Selectman Hull's point earlier regarding solar, um, the purpose of doing solar, um, is to save the town on energy costs. And I just wanted to point out, um, if residents weren't making the connection, that the reason why we have an electric vehicle at the fire department for inspections, the reason we have a hybrid inspectional vehicle um, is to be in line with that energy efficiency and to save the town money. So I did just wanna say, and I wanted to, um, thank the town administrator, and in particular, our building commissioner. Um, they have been looking for a vehicle since last year, the last town meeting, I believe, for the original article. Correct. So I really thank you for getting this, um, this done.
And this particular, uh, vehicle, it's forty miles per ga- gallon average, that's.
I know, I want one for myself.
Pretty good.
It's better than my little Honda Civic.
A lot better than my truck, I can tell you that. Any other questions about this? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Oh, bear, bear with me a second. Um, Mister Chairman, I motion that we approve the contract for services between the town of Dyton and DMR Corporation, DBA Route forty-four Toyota at one one five four New State Highway, Rainham, Mass, as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco?
May I add one last thing?
Passes, yeah.
Um, for residents, this will be used for inspectional services, it's not just for the building commissioner, although I'm sure he'll be using it a lot. It's also for the health agent, who does various inspections, and also for our conservation agent as well. Thank you.
The next agenda item is, uh, temporary sewer department staffing recommendation. This is dated and is sent to, uh, to Dyton Board of Selectmen from, uh, Town Administrator, uh, Michael Mullin. At their last meeting, the Sewer Commission voted to seek, to seek the hiring of a temporary clerical employee to help address an immediate staffing challenge to meet an end of the month bill mailing deadline. I have discussed this request with the members of the.
Oh, whoops, sorry, there's a typo. Sorry.
Diane Curtis, members of the Sewer Commission and the Clerical Union. The Clerical Union has agreed to waive internal posting requirements to help address the staffing issue during the next three weeks. As such, I am recommending the following, the Board of Selectmen waived the requirement of the town's hiring policy to allow for the temporary appointment of a sewer department clerk with said appointment in effect from February tenth through the close, close the business on March third, twenty twenty-two. Given the functions performed and ability, ability of the temporary employee to start immediately tomorrow, the posting requirement, requ- requirements required by the hiring policy will be impossible to meet. I have assessed the available hours, up to thirty-five hours of current Clerical Union employees. No employee has the ability to work the need hours without incurring overtime. I am recommending the temporary appointment of Lisa Caledonia to perform the functions of the position for no greater than ten hours per week. Under this proposal, Ms. Caledonia, Donia will be paid at the lowest grade in the Clerical Union wage scale at the rate of twenty dollars and sixty-four cents per hour. Again, this temporary appointment is proposed to be in effect from February tenth, twenty twenty-two through March third, twenty twenty-two. The terms of this proposed appointment has been satisfactory to Ms. Caledonia and the Clerical Union. Going forward, the town would seek to immediately post a vacant sewer department position in collaboration with the department commissioners to be filled on a permanent basis in accord, according to the Clerical Union collective bargaining agreement and the hiring policy. So we need, uh, two motions. The first would be to waive the requirements of the town's hiring policy. And I will entertain a motion, and we can discuss it once the motion is made.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen waive the requirements of the town of Dyton's hiring policy for this specific situation, to allow for, I want that put in there for this, cause it really is specific to this, a tragedy occurred. Um, to allow for the temporary appointment of a sewer department clerk, and that said appoint, actually, that's the second motion, right? Yes. Stop after appointment of a sewer department clerk, please, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brady.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, a call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye. I'll need a second appointment, uh, motion to appoint temporarily Lisa Caledonia to perform the functions of the position for, for no more than ten hours per week. From starting tomorrow to March third, at the rate of twenty dollars and sixty-four cents. Yes.
May I ask a question before I make, and I'm okay with making the motion, so it's not that. My question is, why is the date of March third being chosen?
So, yeah, so that is, uh, so that is, so that is a date after the sewer bills will go out. Uh, so the task at hand will, so the task at hand will be complete.
Okay, okay, okay. But is that banking on the fact that the, that the position would be filled by the next, for the next round of bills, or is this quarterly, I'm sorry?
I, I think that this is an immediate need.
Yeah, this is an immediate need.
But I think that we have time to hire the person.
Actually, without, uh, so actually, without a second person there for a while, but we have an immediate need based on the billing that we want to fill.
Okay.
So after the end of the month, that function will be done, but immediately we'll begin working with the union to post that vacancy.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, posting the vacancy for the long term.
And that work, my concern was mostly that works for the sewer department in terms of their needs and the timing of their business, okay?
Yes, we've done this hand in hand.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Hull?
Lisa Caledonia, is this our conservation enforcement agent?
Yes, it is, and she works twenty-five hours now, so, but it wouldn't be at her conservation rate. It would be at the grade four Clerical Union rate, which is significantly less than a regular hourly rate.
Cause it's a different.
Yeah, it's a whole different position, so it is a whole different function.
So I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
Okay, um, Mister Chairman, I motion that we appoint Lisa Caledonia as the temporary sewer department clerk from February tenth, twenty twenty-two through March third, twenty twenty-two, at a rate of twenty dollars and sixty-four cents per hour.
Is there a second? I'll step down and second that, any discussion? If not, a call for a vote, uh, Selectman Hull?
No.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye, and it passes. There were no acknowledgements, correspondence. Uh, this is dated January twenty-sixth, to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, dear Board of Selectmen, the Emergency Preparation Committee voted at their January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting to disband the pandemic reopening task force as its mission has been completed. I had, maybe the last meeting or the meeting before that, I mentioned that they were considering this, and it's signed by Chief, uh, Chris McGee, who's the chairman of the, uh, Emergency Preparedness Committee. I will entertain a motion to accept this. I assume we have to accept this correspondence? Do we have to accept it, or, I mean, do we have to take any action on it, or just?
Well, we've, hold on, let me think, give me one second. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Administrator, the Emergency Preparedness Committee was created under the Board of Health. So who created the pandemic, I feel like we did.
No, you, the Emergency Committee, it's my understanding that the Emergency Committee formed it.
Okay, then we would just acknowledge this, Mister Chairman.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't need a vote on that, we just.
Well, we're gonna take a vote if it's okay to, just to acknowledge this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Okay. Um, Mister Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen acknowledge, um, that the Emergency Preparedness has voted, Committee, excuse me, has voted to disband the pandemic reopening task force.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Mister Chairman, point of order, please.
Uh, yes, uh, Mrs. Gulart?
Did the Board of Selectmen vote to form this committee?
No.
No.
Um, Assessor Gulart, I think, do you remember how the Board of Health created the subcommittee, the Emergency Preparedness Committee? I think it was them who created, I think it was that body that created the pandemic reopening task force.
So is Chief McGee saying that that committee voted to disband itself, or to notify the town it should be disbanded?
They voted to disband the pandemic reopening task force, which they created.
I got a feeling this should go to the Board, and whoever created it, I think it has to go back to them. And, and I couldn't remember what we did on the Board of Selectmen. And so I think it's the Board of Health that's gonna act on this, I think you need to refer this to the Board of Health.
So we don't.
Cause if you didn't create it.
We don't need to acknowledge it.
And they voted to disband, and they're notifying the Board of Selectmen, they voted to disband, did they notify the Board of Health too?
I sure hope so.
I think it's a courtesy they notified the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
That's hard to do.
But if you didn't, we didn't create that committee back then, the board that actually did it needs to be notified.
So we don't need to, I'm sorry, may I ask her a question?
Sure.
We don't need to acknowledge this at all?
Well, exactly what is he saying to you? If he's just, just tell, the phrase he used in his letter.
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, the Emergency Preparedness Committee voted at its January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting to disband the pandemic reopening task force as its mission has been completed.
All right. So since the Board of Health, uh, created or appointed or whatever, the committee itself and the subcommittee has voted to disband. This is similar to the Stormwater Committee being a subcommittee of the Board of Health. If the Stormwater Committee votes someday to disband, we've gotta go back to whoever created us, which in our case is the Board of Health. And we would notify, the Board of Health would notify the Board of Selectmen, that the board, uh, whatever committee it is, has now disbanded. So I think if the chief has not notified the Board of Health, it should go to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health should just notify the Board of Selectmen as a courtesy. That's what I think, I don't think you have to vote to acknowledge, unless the chief notified both the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen.
I know at the last pandemic, uh, task force reopening committee, I was president as well as our town administrator, and the, uh, chairman of the Emergency Committee, and Todd Pillings was at that meeting, the Board of Health was represented at that meeting, said that he's gonna bring this back to the Emergency Committee meeting, and they're gonna disband the pandemic, uh, task force, because they've already reopened. Hopefully, we'll never have to go through this again, but they've already reopened, so I don't know whether or not, I'm not gonna tell the chief that he needs to notify the Board of Health, that would be his responsibility, and he may have, but I know that the, uh, Todd Pillings, uh, Board of Health agent was at that meeting when we discussed this.
So the question is, did Todd take it back to the Board of Health, and did the Board of Health act on it at their meeting?
I don't know.
That would be the only thing that's missing.
I was at the last meeting, Selectman Hull?
I'm a little confused. Earlier this year, we had a discussion about the involvement of a member on that committee. I don't know if we took an official vote to put him on that committee, but we were all in agreement that he should be on that committee. If what Mrs. Gulart is saying true, why didn't we have that discussion? Cause that really had no business of ours.
Which is kinda.
Based on that discussion, I assumed that that was under our domain. And with that in mind, I would.
Well, we never.
Put that motion, Dr. Z, man.
Yeah, so we never, uh, voted to put that person, we had a conversation about it. And I went to, the meeting prior to this, I brought that to their attention, and they clearly told me that it's the Emergency Committee that formed the pandemic committee.
That's true.
And they're the appointing, uh, people, and I made it clear to them, I says, well, if this person is not appointed to the pandemic committee, I will bring this back to the board and ask that this person be appointed. What happened was, they, at the next meeting, they decided that it's gonna be disbanded, and I get it, I, I've always called this the pandemic task force, which is not, it's the pandemic task force for the reopening of our buildings. And that's, we're open.
We've been open.
Hopefully, we'll never have to close down like we had before and have to form a task force again, but that issue, I, I hear what you're saying, cause we were, I think we we were all united on the fact that this person should have been on the committee.
So that, that issue came to us from the individual coming to our meeting and asking if they were on it, cause the meeting had been had, and they didn't know if they should should have went or not. Um, but it was about the Emergency Preparedness Committee, we all, so we had two conversations, like, are they on the pandemic reopening task force? And are they a member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee? Um, but those were always, that was their decision. It was just a spontaneous conversation that ended up happening, um, at a meeting.
I thought at one point, though, we, that we, uh, had him appointed to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. I thought we, I think it might be prior to you, uh, coming on board, but I, I thought we had a, when you were the
Mm-hmm.
acting town administrator, quite frankly.
And that was when
And Mrs. Gulart was on.
the Board of Health came back to us and said, we created this committee. You don't appoint the people to it, and we said, oh, okay. I know, it's a lot, it's a long-sorted history, but. I know, it's a lot, it's a long-sorted history, but I believe he is on it, and I believe he does go to the meetings as well.
Yes. But what brought this up was the fact that he wasn't being notified of the pandemic task force, but he was not on it. I was on the assumption he already was, but he wasn't, and they made it clear to me that they do the, emergency committee does the appointing. But anyway, they disbanded. Do we have a motion in a second to acknowledge the, okay, a call for a vote if we're all done discussing? Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z? And Campuchico is also.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we hope that it was sent to the Board.
Yes.
I'm sure, because this is actually their letterhead.
Yeah.
They use a similar letterhead.
Yeah, I don't know if they.
I'm sure that this was Mrs. Grassi, who was the office manager of both.
Yeah, so she, yeah.
Would have sent it, yes.
Approval of the minutes for January 26th, did we get those? Because I didn't, I didn't see those minutes.
I don't see them in my.
I have those, I don't understand why they're not included. They are done, but we can put those on the next.
Is that okay?
I would ask for a motion to continue those, approval of those minutes to February 23rd, so next Board of Selectmen's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
A call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Oh, that's me, Shu, you're on. Sorry. Bueller. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the following warrants, all dated February 2nd, 2022, 31A-22, in the amount of $141,179.45. Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
31B-22, in the amount of $82,065.56, and the delay was because I was waiting for Nancy to do it. It's just an old habit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, a call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated February 9th, 2022, 32A-22, in the amount of $115,142.84, 32B-22, in the amount of $498,603.26. Brace yourselves, gentlemen. 32C-22, in the amount of $3,080, oh, $80,000, oh my lord, sorry, $49.0. And I'll say that one more time. 32C-22, in the amount of $3,080,49.
I'm afraid to ask for a second, but I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, a call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Public input.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Robert Woods? Robert Woods here, 158 Chase Street?
Yes, Mr. Woods, yes.
Yeah, good evening. Um, I've been listening to your meeting tonight, and I've heard a lot of things. I would like to thank you both for putting Mrs. Caledonia in for a temporary position to help out in the Sewer Department. That's gonna be very helpful. And a couple of other things I'd like to bring up tonight is the protocol for annual town meeting or our special town meetings. And I would, I would really appreciate it if the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator could look into possibly doing away with the Cushing's Manual and adopting Robert's Rules of Order, because there are only three communities in the whole Commonwealth that use the Cushing's Manual, and it can be confusing. I know we have a new moderator, and the public, and all the public in this area all use the Robert's Rules of Order, and I think it's time that we, you know, get up to speed with that. And the last thing I would like to talk about.
I have a question on that. Is, do you know, is that a bylaw that we use, the Cushing rules, or?
Yes. Or is it just at the discretion of the moderator, Mr. Woods?
No.
Well, no, this is.
It's historical. It goes way back. I know Mr. McCann had referenced that.
He did.
Yeah, oh, obviously, it's historical, and it's been used since the 1700s.
That's true. It's true. It's actually true.
But I think it's time to move forward.
I don't think they had the Cushing.
We're in 2022 now. And I'm not an expert on this or anything, I'm just, I'm asking you people to look into it, to see it, because I think it's, you know, it's a better form of procedure for the town going forward. There was a little confusion at the last town meeting, and it would just be overall better for everyone. I, I know it's nice that we have this Cushing's Manual, and it's historic, and Dayton's an old town, but, you know, we're modern today. We are modern. And it's confusing, I mean, how many people do you know that know anything about the Cushing's Manual? But most people understand Robert's Rules of Order. I'm not saying most people, but a lot of people.
So Cushing's Manual, Mr. Woods, I agree with you.
For some reason, I can't hear you, Brett.
I'm sorry, Cushing's Manual is almost like old-school English. It's actually very hard to understand, and I know you've seen a copy, Mr. Woods, so you probably agree. Whereas Robert's Rules is much easier to understand, it's shorter, and it's much more straightforward as to like how meetings should actually be conducted, so I agree with you.
Okay, great. And just if you guys could look into it and see if there's a procedure, if we have to vote on it at town meeting, or it's something that, the pleasure of the Board, of course, and the Town Administrator. And the other thing I heard tonight was a lot of spending, a lot of tax increases, and, you know, money, money, money. And my point here tonight is, earlier this evening, Mrs. Suzer retired, and my hat was off of her for all the dedicated gear that she put into town of Dayton, but primetime, to me, needs to be looked at, and I think we need to do a cost analysis there. As you know, Brett, I've been attending FinCom meetings for at least 20 years, and two-thirds of the clients that were attending primetime are from out of town. They don't even belong to the town of Dayton. And whatever they were charging really wasn't enough to cover them for the day. So the tax phase of Dayton were really subsidizing non-residents. And Mr. Ferry spoke tonight about hiring some new personnel. So I think it would be a good idea, now's the time to really take a good, hard look at the cost analysis of what it costs to run, how much money we're taking in, and to see what we're losing. I know that we have always lost year after year, and I don't know the exact figures. And my last point would be, you know, I hear a lot of talk at every Selectmen's meeting about doing things for the seniors in our community. You know, we do not have a good council on agent for our seniors, like Rehoboth does, like Swansea does, like Somerset does, and they provide programs, you know, they hire CPAs to help seniors with taxes, they have luncheons, they do trips, you know, it's a good place to go and have, you know, just some quiet time with your friends. And now is, I think, a golden opportunity for the town to do something for our seniors, not seniors from out of town. And, and I would really like the town accountant and the town administrator to do a good, solid cost analysis on that program. And especially with, you know, the pandemic, I know they were having a lot of trouble over there, you know, with the clients, with the staff, and, you know, it's really, would be beneficial to the senior citizens in this town to have a senior center. And I heard someone mention the strawberry vine, I get the strawberry, strawberry vine myself. Not that I'm that old, but my wife used to be on the council on agent. So, um. I'm almost that old. But, you know, the senior citizens in this town deserve something. And the new director that they hire, this is just my opinion, you know, I think that she should be a shine coordinator like Mrs. Pinto is, to help people with their taxes, I mean, not their taxes, their insurance. Mrs. Pinto has been providing the service for some of our seniors, not many people know that she is a shine coordinator, because she's so busy taking care of veterans and doing the work on the building department. But going forward, the new director of council on agent could really be something special for our town. So I know I'm asking a lot, and I just really hope that the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator, and the Town Accountant give that program a good, hard look. And that's all I have for this evening. And I just was trying to cut off Mrs. Goulart, because I'd like to cut off now.
Dr. Z, you had a, you hand up.
I actually, so I'm gonna disagree a little bit with Mr. Woods. I actually don't think it's a lot to ask for that we do a cost benefit analysis of primetime. I think we should be doing that for every program. I don't disagree with anything you said about the numbers, I don't disagree with anything you said about the clientele, a lot of them being from out of Dayton. I will, what I will say is, regardless of what that cost analysis finds, I still believe that.
In him.
Oh, I'm sorry, I still believe that the next COA director could turn things around based on what the analysis finds. And I'm not saying it's gonna find anything, I, I don't know. But I really think that they can build upon what's been done before and really revitalize it if that's what it needs. So I don't want to make any, like, decisions based on, oh, it comes out that we're in the red, not in the black. I don't know what it's gonna find, but I'm willing to see what our options are, but I do also agree with you on the senior center as well.
Great. That's all I'm asking for, is just a good, hard look at it. Nothing personal against anything, or any employees, or anybody over there, but I'm just looking out for the people of Dayton, not people from out of town, and we have been subsidizing that for quite a few years. And if, if going forward, if they figure out what the daily cost would be, maybe we would have to charge out-of-towns a little more money. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, that's not my area expertise, but I would like to have a senior center with more than Tai Chi.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Woods. Mrs. Goulart?
Yeah, I'm certainly not opposed to that study, but I can tell you, we did do one before, and to make the blanket statement that we're subsidizing people from out of town is not exactly true. In addition to the amount, the daily rate that is charged for the primetime program by the people who attend, there is also a, it's not a grant, somebody, a resident of this town literally put money into a.
Fund.
I'm not sure what you call it. When they pass away, they put money in, and that money is handled by a bank.
Mr. Woods, let Mrs. Goulart speak. If you want to be spanned, I'll let you be spanned.
And the, at certain times of the year, that bank disperses money to the program for, for citizens. I'm not sure it says you have to be from Dayton, so, and the other thing was, when we looked at it years ago, and this was, I was the Selectmen at the time, but the FinCom also talked about this. The other thing was, so between the money that you get from the, the daily rate you charge, the money that was, I'll call it, it's an endowment that comes into the town for a senior program, there was also concern that the town should have some contribution, not the whole thing, but to help run programs for seniors. So that's how this all came about. So to look at it again, I think it's a good idea, and find out about that, I'll call it outside social funding, that endowment that was left, the daily rate, because it did get raised at one time, I think it's 25 now, but it was lower than that at one time. So I'm certainly not opposed to that, but there's more to this than just a blanket statement that we're subsidizing out-of-town people, because that, that's not, that's not exactly 100%. If the Board would allow, I just want to quickly hit on the points that I've mentioned earlier tonight, things you, update you guys need to know. Pleasant Street Bridge, I met with, and this is the bridge near Muddy Cove Lane, it's not the Somerset-Dighton Bridge, further down Pleasant. I met with Mr. Ferry last Friday, and we discussed my new title and my new assignment. And based on that, and looking at the map geo that he had, it appears there will be some land-taking and easements. There's gonna be heavy participation, obviously, by the Concom because of the cove and everything else that's there. And then I spoke to the town administrator today as a follow-up to the meeting with Mr. Ferry, and based on the experiences of three bridges in the past, this is gonna be our fourth bridge project that we've worked on. And based on how we handle all of those with easements and negotiations and various groups, Concom, whoever, I think, in looking at it, if we go with the old, what we've done for three bridges, all right? Mr. Ferry handles the project. That actually, that means dealing with Beta Group, Beta Group and all of that stuff. When we get to the point of construction, all of that, I handle the process, which means all of the things we have to do legally and negotiations and come back to the Board and say we need money for easements, all of that kind of stuff. So, Mr., again, Mr. Ferry is the program, I'm the process, meaning the financial thing, and the two of us, working with the Town Administrator, should be able to handle this thing at this level, because number one, this is the smallest bridge project we've had, and hopefully, we're gonna get money from the state and maybe even the feds, but our three other bridge projects had state and federal involvement, money-wise. We didn't have a Town Administrator at the time, so Mr. Ferry and I were talking to the Board of Selectmen, so that's how we got through this whole thing. But now that we have a Town Administrator, from just the, if you will, the, the control of the project from beginning to end, now, now that also is gonna involve other people, if you're gonna go for grants and all that, because Mr. Ferry and I don't do that, but we'll work with Mr. Mullin as far as the local stuff, and how we do easements and, and that kind of stuff, so, so that's what I wanted you to know. Initially, we didn't think there were going to be easements, but in looking at it through map geo, now we think there are, not many, but it's still gotta be done. Aggie Sol, I got to the meeting late, because I went to Mrs. Smith's funeral, and I spoke with the business manager at the school, and Aggie Sol is not a done deal, they're looking into a number of things. From an assessment standpoint, we're looking at whether or not a pilot agreement would be needed or appropriate or whatever, because there is a, it's a unique situation in that we have a private company, the solar company, who is talking about putting solar on two public buildings, and the capacity for those solar panels is very well compared to the solar farms that we're all familiar with in town. There's a question about whether or not all of the energy generated is actually gonna use, be used by the schools. If it is, they don't need a pilot agreement, I don't believe. But there's also been talk that the school won't use all of the power generated, which means they will be producing a product and selling it on the market, meaning selling it to National Grid, and when that comes into place, that's a whole different ballgame. So we're working on trying to figure that whole thing out. The other thing I'm working with Mr. Costa, the business manager on, is, they are looking to, Aggie is looking into whether or not it would be more cost feasible to buy on the market than to put in solar. And the reason that we're looking at it is, I think, I think both Mr. Pacheco and Dr. Z, you guys know about the penny through the MMA Constellation Program? Now, there was, we're on the aggregation, but then we got the deal, and we get another penny for all municipal buildings. So Aggie has had some business with Constellation, but I don't think they have negotiated anything new. So I'm looking into whether or not we can help Aggie through the Constellation Program that MMA offers, even though Aggie is not a member of MMA, every community in the county is, and we all send children to that school, so, and I know that our own schools would have been eligible for that MMA program had they not already gotten into a contract, and they were in a contract and couldn't get out of it. So that's something else we're looking at. So trying to figure out which, which method is the best way to go for electric as far as Aggie goes. The, you mentioned solar on town property. I gotta look through my stuff, if it's not here, it's at my stuff at Town Hall. There was a proposal years ago to put solar on the landfill on Tremont Street. It was thoroughly discussed. It was thoroughly discussed, the reason it went nowhere was because the company refused to guarantee the integrity of the cover. And if the cover gets punctured, broken, whatever, the seal is broken, we got problems. And what we do know is, all of our tests have been very good, our father's, the wells have been good, they're clean, and as you come in closer to the landfill, the testing has been good. We don't want that to change, because if that changes, and that landfill cover is, uh, damaged in any way, that falls on the town. So, um, I would pull that stuff out and give it to the Town Administrator, just so he knows, uh, if I haven't already given it to him, I might have. When I, when I clean out this stuff, I think the town can use it, I give it to Mr. Mullin. Um, the, uh, oh, I just wanted to mention, Cushing's Manual, I'm not opposed to looking into the change, but something unique happened. Do you remember back, a year or so back, we thought we were gonna have to have a DI Regional, a whole district meeting, a tent meeting, remember that, the budget issue?
Yes.
One of the problems we ran into in discussing that meeting, the two towns have different rules of order. And so it was decided that, uh, the best way to handle it was we would get an outside moderator. And the outside moderator came in, and when we discussed that, he just says, look, I'm the moderator, if we have the meeting, you're gonna hire me as the moderator, and I will determine what rules we, we go by. So that ended it. But just thinking about the study, uh, consideration that Mr. Woods mentioned, that was something that came up recently. We didn't have to deal with it, and we wouldn't have had to, because the moderator made that decision. But just something to think about, that maybe there needs to be uniformity, and since we use Robert's for our meetings, okay. And when I said it was historic, I meant it goes back to the, I think when the town was incorporated on eighteen hundreds or something, so, uh, I just wanted to-
Three-five question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I, I wasn't speaking in opposition. Um, and in closing, I just wanted to mention something. Uh, you mentioned last week the passing of Henry Bennett, and I did want to mention publicly that, in addition to him being the Civil Defense Director, he served on the Dyton School Committee and the Dyton Finance Committee. So he was involved with town government for a period of time. And I would just mention that in passing of Mrs. Glenna Smith, after she retired and had time, she joined a group that made sojourn bears for the cancer patients, so although she was retired, she was still with the town of Dyton, the last time I saw her was at the bear meeting, but the last meeting of COVID shut us down. So, um, those are update, Dora Estates, that's the other one. Last Tuesday night, Mr. Pillings and I went to the Town and Concom meeting, it got continued again till March. Um, the reason being, the engineer for the estate had made additional changes to the plan after he met with Mr. Pillings and I the previous week. So he was talking about changes that it just, it, it didn't meet the requirements of the letter that Mr. Pillings had wrote. The Concom and Town and the Chairman read every single point and asked the engineer to respond. And there were a few times when he said calculations don't match, so what's gonna happen is, um, Concom continued it to the March meeting, when we went out in the hall and talked to the engineer, um, he asked us if we would meet with him again. So there is going to be, hopefully, one more meeting at the Old Town Hall with, uh, Mr. Pillings, Mr. Aggie, the engineer, and I, to go over what changes he's gonna make to the plans based on the last letter that Mr. Pillings wrote. And as we said to the committee that night, we're hoping one more meeting in March, everything will be addressed. So, uh, it was a, uh, it was a productive meeting as far as everything that, uh, Mr. Pillings had written, um, was either addressed or is going to be addressed by the time we meet in March. So I think that, uh, I think, I think we're coming to the end of this, because as Mr. Pillings said to the engineer, we're not that far apart. So that's where we are with all of those projects that I'm working on with various people in town.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart. Mr. Woods, did you have anything else you wanted to say? I know I, you were talking before.
Yes, sir, um, that, that fund that Mrs. Goulart was talking about is called the Romero Fund.
Yes.
And I, I understand, you know, that maybe they use that money to subsidize primetime, but that money really could be used for the Council on Aging too. Um, I, I've had a lot of discussions over the years about primetime with Chairman Swartz, when he was on the FinCom, and several other people, but, you know, I never wanted to bring it up, because I didn't want to, you know, hurt Alice's feelings, you know? She worked very hard, she established that program, it was a great program during its day. But I, I, I think its day is gone, it's just my opinion. And, you know, that Romero Fund is a beautiful thing, my, my wife spent five years on the Council on Aging, so I kind of know a little bit about their budgets. But, um, it would be great if the financial team, the Town Administrator, and our Town Accountant just could do a good, hard look at it, and make sure it's feasible, and, and try to think about the senior citizens that live in this town, and give us somewhere nice to go. It'd be sure nice to turn that building into the Council on Aging. And that's all I have for tonight, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very quickly, um, I just wanted to elaborate on what I had said earlier. I do think, um, that the prospect of having a new COA Director really presents an opportunity, um, if we can seize it, um, and if we want to, um, to really re-engage Dyton's seniors, um, to really keep what works, what works well, expand on that, um, and maybe institute some new programs. Um, I know, for example, Somerset, and I believe Swansea as well, during the pandemic, during the height of the pandemic, were doing a lot of, like, drive-through events, um, so there are some cool ideas out there, um, that some local communities have. The other thing unrelated to that, the last thing I wanted to say, is that, to Selectmen, uh, Assessor Goulart's point, Boards do use Robert's Rules, and as you know, us serving together for so long, and you in so many different capacities, um, on different boards and committees, the public's used to seeing Robert's Rules of Order in action. So I think it is a little confusing to people, and I know people are used to the town meetings and how they're run, um, because Mr. McKeon had been the moderator for over three decades, I believe. Um, but I think that can be kind of confusing, they're used to seeing one set of meetings conducted one way, using Robert's Rules of Order. Again, that's what streams on Channel Nine Live, um, and on replay, and then they go to the town meeting, um, and I think it can be a little confusing, because they're not run the same way, um, similar, of course, um, but, um, so I think that that is definitely worthy of exploration, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go into executive session, we will not be returning to, uh, a meeting, and entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman? Oops, sorry.
Second, I'll second. I, I think we need to read it.
We read it.
Oh, yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the ba, bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
I declare.
A, Dyton Police Officers, Mass. Cop, Local three oh six. B, Dyton Permanent Firefighters Association, Local four, three, three, two. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements. Also, executive session minutes, the approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Second. Call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Good night, everybody, have a happy Valentine's Day.
Enjoy.
Have a good night, be safe.